Seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three, we will call the City Council Meeting of the City of New Ulm to order. At this time, item number one is the consent agenda. Counselors, what are your wishes?
I'll offer a motion to approve those.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion does carry. Item number two point one, under public hearings, is a public hearing on the special assessments for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three snow, weed, and debris removal.
Counselors, this is something that we do every year. Once we get to the fall, we see which charges are left for these types of things. So this is for the weed and the snow removal. This year, the total is about seventy-nine thousand, but seventy-four thousand of that is for that building that was demolished downtown. Other than that, there's eight weed ones on there. Four of those are repeat offenders, nine snow ones, two of those are repeat offenders. Once you guys approve these assessments for tonight, they have another thirty days before they're sent to the county, and then those are assessed. Once they're, if they're not paid, they're assessed, and they have to pay them with their two thousand twenty-four taxes.
Notice that five of them are from out of state, too, owners from out of state.
Yeah, a lot of the times it ends up being a bank that's taken over, and then they just let it go until they're done with whatever their foreclosure is.
Right, and then add that to the, yep, okay.
I did not receive any letters or calls or anything for any of these.
Okay.
If nobody wants to be heard, I'm going to offer the resolution, close the public hearing, and establish the special assessments for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three snow, weed, and debris removal charges.
Second.
There's someone like to be heard?
One moment, we do have a motion and a second, but there is someone that may like to be heard. This is regarding the weed or snow and debris removal, or are you here for water assessments? Debris, yes. If you would like to be heard, you can come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record, please, and thank you. Yep, we can.
My name is Mark Rutz. I live at twenty-six North Franklin Street. And what other things did you require?
Nope, that's, yep, that's good. And yes, what information would you like to share with council today regarding these assessments?
Well, considerable information. I don't know what precipitated or caused the city to act. I have strong suspicions. There's Karens in my neighborhood, and they're looking to make trouble. I have a disagreement with the city. You did not remove what you alleged you removed. You had seven people there. You had an end loader, a dump truck, a skid loader, a couple of shovels, no broom, I will note. And what they did was the big lout. First, I have some rocks on my driveway, which I'm screening the contaminants out of, and I'm throwing the contaminants away and recovering the rocks, and those will go to a contractor or something like that. I use, I will use some to landscape around my house because I have a wet basement, and they will be of use. What was done was the berm of, to prevent silt from going into the stormwater, was the first thing that was destroyed. The second thing that was destroyed was a tarp I had over these dry materials. I can't in the winter when they're accreted with moisture separate them. And someone vandalized that tarp early in the winter, and I was hoping it didn't get water under it, but it did, and the rocks were accreted there. The big lout piled heavy rocks into the center of the tarp and yanked it this way and that way violently until he ripped it.
The city did this?
The city did this, assuming that these.
If I can ask a question, were these rocks not located in the public right-of-way, and that's why you were notified, which I know they were?
Yeah. Driveway?
Madam President, City Counselors, I can interject. We're the office that took care of this.
Thank you.
Mr. Rutz was sent a letter on January thirty-first of two thousand twenty-three explaining that he had materials placed within the city public right-of-way at his home. He was sent his second letter on February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three with photos showing the rock pile within the public right-of-way. What caused, what happened here is it was out, close enough to the street where the snowplow caught the rocks, pushed the rocks into the alley and caused issues for their neighbors.
Yes, it was. I went up and witnessed it. That's in my ward. I went up and witnessed that part of it.
So the billing was then sent to Mr. Rutz, half hour skid steer time, half hour of labor times two workers, and then admin and engineering services were included on the bill. So that is what was received to our office with the complaint, the letters that were sent, and the billing that was sent. There was two billings that was sent out with the past due notice and whatnot, so.
I did not receive the letters until a police officer stopped by with a letter in hand.
We tried to have the letters delivered by certified mail multiple times, and they were rejected, so we had the letters served.
There was only one notice from the post office. It had no zip code on it. I was being harassed by my sister at the time, and I thought that was an avenue of that. By the time I got to the post office, it wasn't there. There were not multiple occasions. What I'm a little bit disturbed about is, I think you should know, I was a mayoral candidate, probably the only one with an executive background. And I'm very surprised that in a city that I regard as congenial, friendly, and nice to people, and I want New Ulm to continue that way, no one ever bothered to call or stop by and talk with me. This is all done high-handedly. I didn't know at first if this was a comedy of errors.
Mr. Rutz, you just stated earlier that a police officer came by with the letters. Did he talk to you at that time?
He said, I know nothing about this.
But he had the letter?
I'm just the delivery boy.
He's delivering, okay. So you had an opportunity to talk with someone in the city at that time, correct?
He said he didn't know anything. He just handed me the sealed envelope, and I looked at it, and that's the first notice I got.
Sure, and certainly, but you can understand that if we have made attempts to send you mail with a certified letter, that it is not on the city, that you did not pick those letters up, and were not aware.
You're not aware when you don't have a return receipt? Is that what you're trying to say?
Mr. Stadheim.
Yeah, we received the notification from the post office that the certified mail was undeliverable, and at that time, that's when we had the police department deliver certified mail.
Right, so we, so we went through the proper channels that we go through each time that this situation occurs with a residence. The certified mail was not picked up, so then we did send someone out from the city to speak with you. So I think that we were going through a proper process.
Madam, they did not come out to speak with me. They openly said, I do not know what this is. I have.
Okay, well, either way, the letter should have given you the information that you needed to take any further action.
Which I did, at that point.
Sure.
Because of the vandalism or sabotage to that tarp, water had infiltrated it, and the rocks were accreted.
Okay, well, this.
What I did for a week was to pull the tarp off in the sunlight, remove the rocks that I could, and then put the tarp on overnight to try and keep it insulated.
Okay.
And I was one day away from finishing when the very excessive crew descended.
But prior to that, you received notification that you did have items that were in the public right-of-way.
I was trying to comply with that.
Right, okay.
It was ninety percent of the way done.
Yep, but we understand that, but you, yeah.
And from the vandalism, it was a difficult job. Then what transpired is they drove away with the dump truck and the end loader, and the skid loader then proceeded to drive over the pile. Now, the conditions at that time were around freezing, and so what he did was compact them, like making a wet snowball. Once you make it, it doesn't unfluff.
Right.
And he drove over it repeatedly. They scattered rocks, broken glass, nails around my car tires, out on the sidewalk and in the street, which afterwards I picked up because that's a hazard. And at the end, the fellow in the skid loader was taking his bucket and pounding the rocks from the top.
So what are, so what is the, what is the purpose of this? Are you simply trying to dispute what happened? Are you simply trying to dispute that you didn't get the information that you needed? Because what I'm seeing is that you were given the information that you needed. We actually had somebody come to your door. They delivered a letter, whether they knew that what was in it or not, you know, but you were given the information and an opportunity to do that. You did not comply within the timeframe, and we had to, we had to correct that and get the items out of the public right-of-way.
The acts of the city, and you've acknowledged that those are city employees, were vandalism and trespass.
I'm not acknowledging any of that. I'm acknowledging the fact that you received the information and that we acted accordingly based on the information in the letters.
You are stopped because you did what you accused me of doing. You scattered debris on the sidewalks, in the, in the street. You had four fist-sized rocks of my double fist scattered in the street. That's dangerous. Why was that done? You had seven people there. They didn't bother to pick up anything.
Okay, yep, thank you. Is there anything else you have to add?
I do not support criminal activity, and that's why I question these spurious charges. And I see that you are very busy trying to branch drag. You do not acknowledge your criminality.
Thank you. Mr. Rutz, we appreciate your comments. Thank you.
I don't believe so. You're specious in your contacts. Well, I do not support criminality. I object to that, and I think you can do a lot, a lot better than that.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Rutz. Thank you.
Are you finished? Pretty much as I expected. I was told by the.
Thank you, Mr. Rutz, for your comments. Thank you.
So we have a resolution and a second on this.
We do have a resolution and a second. Again, this is still a public hearing. Is there any other information? You had mentioned that you were out there. Is there anything else that could be added, Mr. Stadheim or Council Christian?
I believe he had left, but to give the council a little more background, it's not the first time the city engineer's office has contacted the resident about doing stuff in the public right-of-way. We had major issues in the alley right-of-way of him digging up to the pole, gas line exposed and whatnot. My motion stands.
Mr. Stadheim, it sounds like we went through the proper channels like we do with all assessments.
The city attorney was consulted on the letters and everything that went out as well, yes.
Thank you so much. Hello.
Hello, Jeff Hoffman, Public Works Superintendent.
Thank you.
I was actually there at the site when the guys cleaned it up, and we swept it up with a broom. We cleaned it up. The tarp was ripped when we got there, so, and I have it in my description that I handed in to Joe. So, and we swept up, what needed to be swept up, we did not leave rocks laying everywhere, like he says, and nails and stuff. I don't know where these nails are coming from, but, so.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Appreciate your comments. Any additional discussion at this time?
And I would just throw out, you know, we did send the police officer out because we did receive the two return receipts, and we wanted to make sure before we took action to do anything that he was, in fact, notified. So he actually said he getting thirty days, essentially got ninety days to correct his mistake.
Yep, and that was an advice from the city attorney's office to have it served prior to us doing that corrective work.
Okay, my comments are, it sounds like we went through the proper channels. We sent certified letters. We sent a uniformed officer out to hand-deliver a communication. We provided timelines for Mr. Rutz to take care of this. I'm hearing from witnesses there, and some city engineering notes that we've gone through the proper channels, and I don't, I don't know what we could have done better. We went through the process that we do for everything else. Are there any other comments? Okay, we do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion?
The resolution.
Yep. Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, that motion does carry. Thank you. Item number two point two is a public hearing on special assessments for the two thousand twenty-three delinquent water and wastewater assessments.
Counselors, this is the second year we have used this process to collect these delinquent water and sewer charges. Per state statute, water and sewer charges follow the property, so we have every right to assess them. We have double-checked with Robert to make sure that we are following the correct procedure and doing everything that we need to do here. So notices were sent, and we had quite a few people come in and pay after those notices were sent. We started with just over ten thousand dollars. We're down to about eighty-four hundred right now. Once this is, if this is approved tonight, these will go, they have another thirty days to come to our office and pay. After that, they go to the tax rolls and would be payable with their two thousand twenty-four taxes.
Okay.
I did have one gentleman come into the office. Mr. Richard Johnson came in. He wanted to make sure that we had followed the correct process because he specifically had an item in his lease with his tenant that the tenant took responsibility for all utilities. So we confirmed with Robert that that was still, we could still assess them, and he said that was correct. Mr. Johnson had pointed out another city's code in which they have made it possible for the landlords to put that in their leases and then not have that, that charge follow the property. I think what Mr. Johnson was asking ultimately was if we would change the city code to do something similar to that. I would just add that we last year changed the city code specifically so that we could do this in an effort to collect some of those charges. And again, this is just the water and sewer. We end up writing off or sending to collections any electric, gas, or steam usage. So this is just collecting a portion of what we're left with. Unfortunately, most please end up being the landlord-tenant, where the tenant has left the landlord with possibly other charges as well as these. The landlords do receive notices when the tenants' utilities are delinquent and they are going to be disconnected. They receive those final notices, and then they also receive this notice then before we send the assessments. So that's all I have to say on that one. And then I believe there was one other gentleman here that wanted to speak.
Perfect. At this time, yes, the public hearing is open. If you can state your name and address for the record.
Quentin Holberg. I own the property at ten fifteen South Broadway. Yes, it's a landlord-tenant issue. Yes, I realize that the state statute allows for this. Doesn't make it right. This is not my bill. There is no other situation with a landlord-tenant sort of deal where I am responsible for someone else's bill. I even went and asked for a copy of the bill. Can't get that, though. That's a privacy issue. I can be held accountable for it, but I can't get any information about it. And we don't recall ever receiving notice on these particular ones that they, that they were being disconnected. I just don't think this is right. So that's my objection.
It is possible that the tenant moved out and just left the bill, so there was never a disconnection. And in that case, the landlord wouldn't have gotten anything until this point.
Sure. Just for curiosity, do you know what the amount is on this particular?
Three hundred forty.
Thirty, ninety-five.
Okay. So I think that we had the conversation, and forgive me if I feel to add whatever you would like, but that, you know, that is part of being an owner of a property. We are, we are within state statute to do this. So I guess that would mean any lease agreements that local landlords have in place with tenants that say that you're responsible for the utilities technically. And Robert, maybe this is a question for you. Technically isn't, isn't legally binding because of the state statute?
Evening, Council. It's actually Kara's on today.
Oh, hi Kara, yes.
Hi, everyone. I was going to note, too, that since there are objections, two objections in this case, that just to make sure for procedurally that before you close the public hearing that you reject, address each objection specifically and determine if you will approve or reject, object to the objection made on the record. And yes, we had talked with staff and confirmed the procedure here and was, that this was done correctly, and submitted that with Nicole earlier today. So happy to take any other questions that you have on this.
Kara, I would assume that these homeowner, or the landlords would certainly have the authority and the ability to file us civil action to collect this, these amounts. Am I right?
Counselor Schultz, they could certainly attempt to get in contact with the tenant or try to obtain, yeah, have the tenant pay for the fee. However, as Counselor Becker noted, this is, as an owner, you are responsible for the utilities used on the property and under statute. This is, this procedure is permissible. So they do have, they would have the option to potentially either pay, have the tenant pay them directly for the charges, or pay for the utility themselves to avoid a certification issue like this for a delinquent fee.
Thank you, Kara. Ms. Amira?
Yes, Danielle Amira, Assistant Finance Director, Finance Office. We do recommend with tenant landlords, the options are to put utilities in their name to avoid this, and we also recommend possibly obtaining a higher deposit from your tenants to avoid this in the future. So those are some suggestions that we have offered on landlords.
Thank you. Thank you.
When a lease was signed four years ago, and a new law goes into effect two years ago, how was I supposed to account for that? That's my response to what you just heard.
It wasn't a new law that went into effect. It was simply an update to our city code that follows the state statute.
The statute, the state statute's new. It's not my mistake, then.
Thank you.
I still object. It's not my bill, and no business would be allowed to do this. Only the government is allowed to steal my money like this.
You would have the right to pursue something civilly with the former tenant.
No. It's not enough to enter into that court system, and it's very expensive. It still doesn't matter the fact that you shouldn't have the right to take money from me for a bill that's not mine. That's the point.
Thank you. So as Kara said, we do need to address these both individually as well to either accept or reject. I guess we will start with Mr. Holberg's property. Counselors?
Well, we heard our attorney tell us that it is the responsibility of the owner of the property, so I reject that argument.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Counselor Christian?
I agree. I'm looking at the other numbers. I agree.
Okay, I would agree, too, that we are within, we're just following the state statute that's been in place for a while, and this is, we're just following the process to collect the charges and doing it uniformly. We also had the conversation last time regarding any reductions, that we don't feel like that is, they're already paying a reduced amount, correct, Nicole? It's already not the whole. It doesn't include the steam. So, so right there, you know, we already are absorbing some of those costs. We're just trying to recoup the utility money that we can legally. Again, and you have the right to pursue whatever you want with, with the former tenant. That is not a city issue here. We are following the code. What was the second one?
Mr. Johnson.
Mr. Johnson, can you refresh us on that, please, Nicole?
He was more so asking that we change the city code so that he could just include that in his lease, and then the tenant would be responsible and not the landlord.
Actually, though, I don't believe they would have to change the city code in your lease agreement. Is that what you're saying, Nicole?
No, he already has it in his lease agreement that the tenant is taking responsibility for the utilities, but per state statute, we can still.
But if they don't pay, it still falls on the landlord, is, is what. So, so I, my thoughts on that is that's not something that we can take action on today. That would be something that would need to come back to a work session for discussion, if we feel like this is something that is worth discussing, or discussing, or whether we stay the course with the state statute, because I feel like we had this discussion at length in the past twelve months.
I agree.
I agree.
Okay. That being said, do we accept or reject?
I will reject.
I concur.
I concur on it.
Concur.
I concur. Kara, does, do we meet the requirements at this time to, if there is no one else that cares to be heard, to close a public hearing?
Yes, Counsel, good evening. Yes, now that you've made a ruling on each specific objection, you can close the public hearing.
Thank you. At this time, would anyone else care to be heard?
No one coming forward. I'll offer the resolution, close the public hearing, establishing the special assessments for the two thousand twenty-three delinquent water and wastewater charges.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, that motion does carry. Item number three point one, ride-share services license to.
Five point one.
I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry. At this time, we are moving up to item number five point one for the presentation on the intersection control study at Center Street and Garden Street. We do have someone here to present. Mr. Stadheim.
Madam President, City Counselors, the city has contracted with Bolton and Mink to perform an intersection control evaluation study at the intersection of Garden Street and Center Street in New Ulm. The presentation today is going to be from Kelsey Larson. She's a traffic engineer with Bolton and Mink. Kelsey presented the findings today to the Brown County Commissioners at their meeting this morning, and she is here to share the results with you today.
Hi, welcome.
Hi, thank you, Joe. I'm Kelsey Larson, traffic engineer with Bolton and Mink, as he said. I'm Kelsey Larson, traffic engineer with Bolton &amp; Mink, as he said, here to talk to you about Center Street or CASA 13 and Garden Street. So today, I'm going to talk through the existing conditions that were found at the location, the alternatives that were considered at this intersection, feedback that we received from the public, our recommendation, and then also a pedestrian underpass that was So the project location is shown here, Center Street at Garden Street. It is located near several schools, St. Paul's Lutheran School, Jefferson Elementary School, the New Ulm Middle School, and Martin Luther College. Additionally, adjacent to the intersection, we have Harmon Park, the New Ulm Recreational Center, and the Brown County Human Services Building, in addition to residential homes. The need for the study came about as a part of an effort to address crash concerns at this intersection, accommodate pedestrians and bicycle activity associated with the proximity of multiple schools, and to improve traffic operations. The intersection was identified by the City of New Ulm Safety Commission, Heart of New Ulm, and the Safe Routes to School Team as a safety priority. During our existing conditions analysis, we did do a field review, and one thing that we noted in that field review was that along the southbound approach of Garden Street, looking to the east, we have sight issue due to trees in the boulevard that are blocking that sight line. We also collected vehicle speed through the study, so we collected speed along Center Street, both east and west of Garden Street. I guess I should note, too, that this intersection, at this intersection, Center Street has the right-of-way, Garden Street is stop-controlled. So we just collected speed data along Center Street. The speed limit on both sides of Garden Street is 30 miles an hour. On the east side of the street, we found the speed to be, the average speed to be 31 miles an hour, and the 85th percentile speed, which is the speed at which 85% of vehicles are traveling at or below, was 36 miles an hour. On the west side of Garden Street, we found, again, the speed limit to be 30 miles an hour. The average speed, though, was found to be higher on this location at 35 miles an hour, and that 85th percentile speed was much higher at 40 miles an hour, so 10 miles an hour above the speed limit. We did a crash analysis at this location. We looked at the last five years of crash data available, and we found that there have been five right-angle crashes, so that would involve a vehicle along Center Street and a vehicle along Garden Street. And then we found two left-turn crashes. Those involved vehicles along Center Street. One was a vehicle making an eastbound left to get onto northbound Garden Street, and the other was a vehicle making a westbound left to get onto southbound Garden Street. We looked at the crash rate and determined the critical index, which is just a statistic that allows us to tell if that intersection is operating outside the normal range compared to similar intersections statewide. We found that the critical index is over one, which does indicate that there is a crash issue at this location. Looking at the traffic operations, so we collected turnee movement count data at this intersection, and we modeled the AM peak, which coincides with both a rush of traffic going to the schools in that area as long, or in addition to commuter traffic going into work. We also looked at the school dismissal peak hour and the PM peak hour. We found that the northbound left and through movements have the worst delay at this location during that AM peak hour, experiencing about 30 seconds of delay per vehicle, and this corresponds to Level Service D. And now, a Level Service is an A to F ranking to describe how well a transportation facility operates from the traveler's perspective, and typically, Level Service D is considered acceptable. I do want to point out, though, that this is the average delay, so of course, vehicles can be waiting longer, can also wait less. And I know we just did a field observation the other week on a very cold and rainy day, and there was a lot more traffic, I would say, than our study, and I would argue that the delay was definitely worse during that peak hour. So of course, during snowy or cold winters, I'm sure it's the same. All other movements, though, that were found to operate well with about 20 seconds of delay or less during that AM school and PM peak hour. We looked at a warrant analysis. We determined that no signal warrants are met at this location. And then we also looked at always-stop warrants, and we did find that an always-stop is warranted at this location. So meeting an always-stop or a signal of warrants are just one element, among others, to justify a signal according to the MINDOT Intersection Control Evaluation Manual. And it states there that if an intersection meets warrants for either a signal or always-stop, a roundabout should be considered. Last thing with the existing conditions that we looked at, with a goal of trying to improve this intersection for pedestrian bicycles, we looked at how long is, how long does it take a typical person to cross at this location? We did not, I guess the numbers shown here are not field observation, rather calculations per highway capacity manual guidance. But really, what this is indicating is that at one and a half to three minutes, this is a very challenging location to cross based on the amount of traffic along the roadway and the distance, the number of lanes that you are required to cross here along Center As a part of the study, we also looked at future traffic volumes. So in order to estimate volumes out to 2045, we looked at historic growth on each leg of the intersection. Along Center Street, we found negative growth over the past years. Along Garden Street, north of Center Street, we found about 0.3% growth per year. And then along Garden Street, south of Center, we saw 1% growth per year. Based on this, we ran an analysis with both an overall 0.5% growth and 1% growth applied to the entire intersection, as it wasn't, you know, certain how much growth there would be at this intersection, but we wanted to make sure that we were coming up with a design that could accommodate growth in the future. So looking at the 2045 no-build operations, we found, of course, that conditions worsen as the traffic volumes are higher. With the higher traffic volumes, we did see that the side street, so movements along Garden Street, left and through, those movements are anticipated to operate with Level Service F or 60 to 90 seconds of delay per vehicle with the increased volume. That would be during the AM peak hour. We also found that the school dismissal peak hour would start to see some increased delay, Level Service E, or about 40 seconds of delay per movement. And then all other movements were found to operate with about 30 seconds of delay or So getting into the alternatives that we analyzed, I first wanted to point out some of the design constraints that are at this intersection. The first being the skew of the intersection. As you can see from the aerial image, that Garden Street and Center Street do not line up at a perfect 90-degree angle here. We also have limited right-of-way in the northwest or Harmon Park corner, and then in the southwest, Brown County Human Services corner as well. There's also a significant grade drop at the park in the northwest corner. A few other things of note would be the existing westbound free right and residential driveways in the northeast corner. And then another thing that makes this a challenging intersection is a transition point from a two-lane to a four-lane road. So Center Street to the east is four lanes, Center Street to the west is two lanes. Going through the alternatives, the first alternative shown here is an always-stop. The warrant analysis, as I stated, does indicate that an always-stop is justified at this location. We did remove several turn lanes with this concept in order to simplify the decision-making for vehicles and to shorten the crossings to try to improve that crossing experience. One thing to note is that since this intersection is just shrinking down the existing intersection, there are no right-of-way or property impacts. And this option was not supported by city or county staff, but was added at the request of MINDOT when they reviewed our report. The next option that was considered is a signal. Even though the signal was found not to be warranted, we did analyze a signal at this This option would maintain two westbound-through lanes at the intersection, as it does today. We did eliminate, similar to the always-stop, we eliminated those channelized free right turns and tried to minimize the lanes at this intersection in order to make the crossings better for pedestrians. But I do also want to note that there is an existing signal at Center Street and Payne that's just less than 500 feet away, and it is not ideal to have two signals that close together in proximity. This option as well has no right-of-way or property impacts. The next option that we looked at was a mini roundabout. Due to the skew of the intersection, the westbound right movement was maintained as it is today. You can see there's still the channelized westbound right turn. As a vehicle is unable to actually make that movement due to the skew of the intersection, we did look at an option that does pull that westbound right into the roundabout, but this would require an ellipse-shaped roundabout. And the city and county preferred to have the circular, standard-shaped roundabout and to maintain the existing westbound right turn as it is today. This allows the driveway, that's kind of hard to see, the driveway, and I guess the pointer doesn't work, the driveway in the northeast corner to be maintained as it is today. So no changes with that driveway. This, I guess this option also helps transition from the four-lane to the two-lane section as we're able to drop the second lane along Center Street through that westbound right turn lane. I also have some notes on here about the slope. As I'm sure everyone's familiar, there is a hill on the west side of the intersection. So the existing slope on that west leg is 7%. This changes to about 2%, 100 feet west of the intersections, or the intersection. Roundabouts can have up to a 4% slope coming into the roundabout, and our analysis estimates we can accommodate a 2% to 4% slope coming into the roundabout, and this can be achieved without raising the intersection. This concept does have impacts to Harmon Park. You can see we show retaining wall needs due to the significant grade drop in that corner, but no impacts to any other properties with this option. The roundabout option looks very similar to the mini roundabout. It's just a slightly larger, more standard-sized roundabout. We still have that westbound right pulled out, channelized, as it is today. We have a little bit more impact to the Harmon Park, but again, I guess due to the grade change, city staff felt that this was acceptable, as this isn't really an area of the park that can be used very well due to that grade change. The roundabout, or the standard-sized roundabout, does have a little bit more impact, or it does impact the Brown County Human Services Building parcel. The building would not be impacted. The impacts would be just to maintain the pedestrian sidewalk on that corner. But all the other notes about the grade are true with this as well. You can see if I go back and kind of compare the two, with the roundabout being a little bit bigger in size, the impacts kind of stretch a little bit further along Center So I realize this is probably very small for anyone to read, but we put together an evaluation matrix to compare the four concepts. From this, the roundabout really stood out as the best option. But I can go line by line with this. So that, looking at, from a safety perspective, both the always-stop and the roundabout would be anticipated to have a significant crash reduction. So the roundabout would have a 72% reduction in crashes. Looking at pedestrian bicycle movements, any of the options would be a significant reduction from the existing condition. The always-stop would technically have the best, as people would be required to stop and allow people to go. But the roundabout would be anticipated to have very minimal delay at only eight seconds per person. The roundabout and mini roundabout have the fewest amount of conflict points if you look at the conflicts between vehicles and pedestrians based on the number of lanes. With the, I guess, the roundabout and always-stop options would be anticipated to have a significant speed reduction. The traffic signal, we would not anticipate to be able to reduce speeds in this area. Looking at vehicle mobility, this is where major concerns are with an always-stop option as vehicles would not be very well maintained through this intersection. We would expect multiple movements to have significant delay, 45 seconds or more per vehicle with an always-stop. Traffic signal, you would still have some movements having that moderate 30-second delay. Where a roundabout, we can see five to 15 seconds for all movements. And then the right-of-way impacts, as I had stated previously, and then one thing I hadn't noted in the last slides was the cost. So the always-stop was the cheapest option at $940,000 in 2025. Traffic signal and the mini roundabout both came in at $1.8 million in 2025, and the roundabout is the most expensive at $2.5 million in 2025. We also did a benefit-cost analysis to compare over a 20-year lifespan the anticipated safety benefits that this would bring in addition to delay benefits. Since we looked at both a 0.5% and a 1% growth, you see, I guess, two columns in this table for delay potential benefits, depending on what that growth is. Main things to note here is that the always-stop and the signal, you can see that the delay benefit for both of those is shown to be negative. That's because overall, with either of those options, we see an increase in delay at the intersection, looking at all the movements together, where the roundabout and mini roundabout were both able to mitigate that delay. None of the options have a benefit-cost ratio over one. A benefit-cost ratio over one would show that the anticipated benefits outweigh the project cost, but the roundabout option, especially if there ends up being close to 1% growth, we would anticipate nearly $1.9 million in benefits compared to that $2.5 million cost. So public input was, or yeah, feedback from the public on the existing conditions and the alternatives was completed as a part of this project. We collected feedback through an interactive comment map that was shared via the city's social media account, and through the existing conditions, people were able to sign up to get notified via email when the alternatives were shared. So through the existing conditions analysis, there were 14 comments received and 69 thumbs-up or thumbs-down reactions to those comments. The common themes from the comments included that safety improvements are needed at this intersection. People had traffic concerns with backups on the hill potentially causing new safety concerns. And then overall, even in the existing conditions phase, we did hear a lot of feedback on signal versus roundabout and alternative discussion. And based on the feedback that we received at that time, 62% of residents responded in favor of a signal or a roundabout at this location, and 38% responded not in favor. Then when we posted about alternatives, again, we shared these alternatives via an interactive comment map and directly with 82 individuals who had received, or signed up to receive emails on the project. The always-stop concept was not shared with the public, as it is not supported by the city or the county staff, but the other three concepts were. We didn't receive quite as much feedback on the alternatives. Five comments and 10 replies on the comments, so the three comments, I guess, three of the comments voiced concerns with the steep grade at the roundabout. One comment suggested providing a tunnel is a better pedestrian crossing, and then two comments were in support of a roundabout at the intersection, and one comment opposed all the options that were shown. I also wanted to share, this is an example of a roundabout in Watertown, Minnesota. It was constructed in 2016, and you could see it's the It was constructed in 2016, and you could see it's the the north leg of the intersection has a pretty steep slope. We looked at the crashes at this location as an example. We found that there have been five crashes since construction of the roundabout. All of the crashes resulted in property damage only. Two of the crashes were involving a vehicle along that southbound approach, which is the steep approach shown. We also reached out to the fire chief and the city about this location, and the fire chief confirmed that any crashes since the roundabout opened have been minor in nature and have not required fire or EMS response. And they overall were very happy with the roundabout and didn't have concerns with the steep slope. So it is our recommendation that a roundabout be, or that a roundabout be constructed at this location. This alternative improves safety for pedestrians, bicycles, and vehicular traffic, as well as providing the best traffic operations of the options that we considered. So I have a few notes on here about the crash reduction anticipated. The pedestrian and bicycle crossings, we anticipate to be improved as they would, or two-stage crossings would be provided on all legs of the intersection. The two-stage crossing would allow you to cross just one leg of, or one lane of traffic and one direction of traffic at a time, and vehicles would be forced to be going at a lower speed entering this location. And yeah, finally, just the note that operations are anticipated to be acceptable with minimal delay even with the 2045 volumes. Again, I just noted on here, the cost of this recommended option is 2.5 million in 2025, and the benefits were between that 1 million and 1.9 million dollar range depending on the amount of traffic anticipated in the future. Although that is less than the total cost, this option is recommended to improve safety at this location. I have just a few more slides. One of the last things we looked at was confirming operations with the nearby signal at Payne and how that would work with a roundabout at this location. We did find during the AM peak hour, what I have shown here in yellow is the maximum queue during that AM peak. So first, the queue on the bottom is showing the maximum queue that we noted from our modeling extending from Payne back through the roundabout. This was noted to happen two times during the peak hour, but we did find that the queues would clear quickly, less than 30 seconds. Really, as soon as Payne would turn to a green light for center or for the traffic along Center Street, we anticipate the traffic to disperse pretty quickly. And from a traffic standpoint, we don't have concerns with the queue extending into the roundabout. Just with the nature of the roundabout forcing traffic to slow down and realize that there is traffic queued up, we don't see a safety concern with that versus at a signal. If traffic is queued up, people could be focused on the green light and not see the queue of traffic in front of them. And the garden or the queue from Garden Street back to Payne, as you can see from the other yellow line, we do not anticipate that queue to ever reach the signal at Payne. And it was only during that AM peak hour that we did notice any queue issues extending between the intersections during the school dismissal and the PM peak hour, we did not know that. I guess one more thing, I guess, city staff has mentioned that based on this queuing concern, the intersection of Payne at Center would also likely be, the traffic control there would also likely be revisited to determine if any changes are needed at that location. Okay, the last thing I have to share is we did look at a potential pedestrian underpass. We looked at two options. This first option has a longer tunnel at 160 feet, but longer tunnels tend to be less inviting for people to go through and to use. So we also looked at a shorter tunnel, which would be 100 feet in length. Now, the main difference, though, between the two, based on the significant grade drop in this area, the longer tunnel would require between zero and 15 feet high retaining walls. At the end of the tunnel, the shorter tunnel would require higher retaining walls between zero and 25 feet. So with the longer, or sorry, with the shorter tunnel and the higher retaining walls, we would recommend fencing be placed along the retaining wall at that location. The cost for both options, and this is just the cost for the pedestrian underpass and the facilities to get people to and from the intersection down to the tunnel and the retaining wall and the tunnel itself, but the cost for both options came in at 1.3 million. The shorter tunnel has, of course, a smaller cost for the tunnel itself, but a bigger cost for the retaining wall. The longer tunnel has a bigger cost for the tunnel and a smaller cost for the retaining wall. And with that, I will open it up for questions.
Hi there, I have two, I have two questions. Number one, could the 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 timing at the light on Payne Street be controlled to prevent some of that queue back up in the AM?
I think that the timing could definitely be looked at. I think one of the issues, though, that I see is probably the only time that we would see traffic backing up is when a person would push the push, the pad, push button and want to walk across as that time is
Okay.
Set based on the crossing distance.
Sure. My next question is in regards to a tunnel. It was an overhead walkover explored as well. I know that we have a lot of truck vehicles, so it would be need to be something that would be pretty high, but I know that that comes with some ADA questions, I guess, as well with the stairs and everything like that. But just curious on that.
Yeah, we did not consider an overpass simply because the grade changes at this location with the actual elevation just further out from the intersection being much lower, a tunnel is much easier to construct.
Could potentially everyone be directed to, I guess, cross at Payne Street versus trying to cross at Center and Garden? I mean, is there really a, I don't know, a joke? Just because I'm looking at the location of where the bridge is and you'd have to like go up and go over and then, or the tunnel and then go back, you know?
Yeah.
So I don't know how practical that is for little kids walking to school in the winter, and those are the ones that use it. Those are the ones I see out there. That's what I'm thinking about.
Madam President, City Councilors, it was similar question was brought forth by the county commissioners today. In my opinion, I see if a tunnel were to be there, I see schools, daycares using it far more frequently than than a single walker or a small group of kids. Just knowing how much programming takes place at the rec center and the Harmon Park and sending groups back and forth and kids connection down at the Jefferson Complex and things of that nature. I think the groups would use a tunnel much more frequently than than, like I said, the individual kids or walkers trying to get across, things of that nature. So it's definitely something that's worth consideration in the future, though.
Okay, but in the meantime, you know, they could still cross at the roundabout.
Correct.
That's still an option.
Yeah.
Okay, I just, yep.
And I mean, one major thing that I see immediately is they do tighten, tighten up the spaces that kids would actually have to walk across, be on the streets, whereas right now they're crossing
The whole street.
Mass amount of
Yeah.
Asphalt to get there, whereas all of these renderings with the roundabout, it's significantly shorter, tighter, tighter spaces. But one question I had was on your, your red, red, yellow, and green screen with the roundabouts. The the regular roundabout, it's a 72% decent decrease in crash for as a mini was 26%. What was the reason for the big difference there?
Yeah, so we reference, they're called crash modification factors, and they're based on studies of locations that have been converted. So at this location, we looked at stop-controlled locations that were converted to a mini roundabout or a roundabout, a traffic signal, or an always stop to get that or that specific reduction anticipated. So based on studies of locations, that is what they have found.
Okay.
Kind of the main takeaway is the mini roundabouts are smaller, the vehicles are still that close together, whereas the full-size roundabout, you're kind of spreading those vehicles out.
It makes sense, but I was just curious, that was a significant difference between the two for essentially the same thing, but.
I think we can all agree this is one of the most dangerous intersections in our community and especially at 7:30 and 3 o'clock. I think we've all lived through getting, trying to get through that area. You presented to the county board. What was their response this morning? And my second question is, did they agree to pay for everything?
Madam President, City Councilors, presentation to the county board today, they were receptive of everything that was presented. I think they, I don't want to speak for them, but it seemed like they had the consensus that they were in favor of a roundabout. Obviously, no action was taken other than receiving the report, but I think they certainly opened the dialogue and encouraged us to move forward with something there. So as far as funding, you know, right now it's kind of a 50-50 cost share that we have with the county for Center Street for maintenance and reconstruction projects like that. But intersections such as this with the history we have and now that we have an ICE report, ICE Intersection Control Evaluation Report, it really opens the door for us to apply for active transportation funding, safe routes to school funding, other district, MinDOT district grant opportunities and things of that nature that the city and the county can apply for jointly, and that really helps us score higher when we have a joint project that benefits both the county and the municipality. So it, you know, very early in the discussion, but that's certainly conversations county engineer and myself will be having.
We're going to file this, what's, what's next? What's the next steps?
I think next steps is kind of weighing Stevens, the county engineer, myself will kind of convene, figure out what we feel like we should do for the next steps, and if that's applying for funding for generally, these grant cycles are four to five years out. I think that's certainly something we're going to look at, and if, you know, obviously anything that we do in the future will be coming back to the council for authorization and whatnot, so. But it's a big first step getting the report done, just so it really helps once we get ready to apply for funding.
Sure.
Yes, very good, very good information. And yeah, I mean, and
Very thorough report, thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Thank you so much. Unless there's no other questions, I'll look for a motion to receive the report.
I'll offer a motion to approve an order filed, the Intersection Control Evaluation ICE report at the intersection of Center Street and Garden Street.
Second.
A motion and a second, any additional discussion?
Again, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Well done. Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That motion does carry. Thank you again. Moving on back to item number three point run. One, ride-share services license to Sarah Pruitt.
I'll offer a motion to approve the issuance of a ride-share license to Sarah Pruitt, 825th Street South, New Ulm, for the period beginning October 18th of 2023 and ending on June 30th, 2024, subject to compliance with all city and state requirements.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any additional discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, Sarah. We have another ride-share driver in New Ulm. Item number 3.2, liquor license renewal for BFD Incorporated.
Approve an issuance of an on-sale intoxicating liquor license renewal for BFD Incorporated doing business as Rets 227 at 518 Center Street, Suite D for the period beginning November 1, 2023 and ending June 30th, 2024, subject to compliance with all city and state requirements.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any additional discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That motion carries. Item number 3.3, a 3.2% malt liquor license transfer.
I'll offer a motion to approve the transfer of off-sale 3.2 malt liquor license at 1201 Westridge Road from Coburn's Incorporated to Holiday Station Stores LLC, DBA Holiday Station Store, number 2746545 for the period beginning November 5th, 2023 and ending June 30th, 2024, subject to compliance with all city and state requirements.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, just want to note the date's November 9th, not November 5th. Any additional discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That motion does carry. Item number 3.4, tobacco license transfer.
I'll take my turns and the other councils. Approve the transfer of a tobacco license from Coburn's Incorporated to Holiday Station Stores, limited liability company doing business as Holiday Station Store, number 2746545 at 1201 Westridge Road, period beginning November 9th, 2023 and ending June 30th, 2024, subject to all compliance with city and state requirements.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second, any additional discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That motion carries. 4.1, moving on to reports, summary of business conducted during board and counts and commission meetings.
I can start, just basically we're going to report on one, and we have the cable commission, supposed to have this cable commission board meeting, but we didn't really have any agenda items, so we canceled it. That's all we got.
Mine is just as short, due to lack of agenda items, no park and rec meeting, and due to lack of agenda items, no heritage preservation meeting.
Nothing going on, huh?
Guess not.
Les told me to give an update on EDA, so I have something to say today. So we did get the the sign up on Westridge Road for Westridge Place, so the progress of that continues to move along. And then we are looking at a potential property sale with the city for some development as well, so yeah, those are two big things happening.
I'm just going to add, last night at the Kegel Club, the sister cities met and had a farewell reception for Evelyn, and she's been the intern for their EDA for the city of New Ulm and with New Ulm Real Estate, and she will be leaving this Saturday if anybody in the community wishes to say goodbye to her.
It was a great meeting, or I'm sorry, I missed it yesterday.
And I finally got to have a Brown County Solid Waste Advisory Commission meeting. I hasn't had one since March, but boy, there's ever details there, but they're most likely going to have to increase tipping fees or the the fee schedule for going to the county for approval, but due to everything being inflated in costs, they are probably going to have to increase $10 going forward, and there is a massive PFOS problem that exists everywhere in society that they are going to have to tackle kind of on their own. So lots of, lots of things going on the Brown County landfill.
Yes. Thank you for these updates, any additional updates? Okay, at this time, moving on to old business, number 6.1, MinDOT Active Transportation Grant, Mr. Stodheim.
Thank you, Madam President and City Councilors. You may recall that we previously applied for MinDOT Active Transportation Infrastructure Program grant funding for the installation of six RRFBs or rap rectangle, excuse me, rectangular rapid flashing beacons at six intersections throughout the city. We were notified on June, July 28th that we received funding for this project. Council authorized plans and specs and set the bid date at the September 19th meeting. We opened bids on October 11th. Bids came in 11% under the engineer's estimate, and I am happy to inform you that the state is going to cover 100% of this project with the grant agreement. So we are asking for approval for this city manager and finance director to execute the agreement, and we will most likely begin this project in the spring, depends how long fall lasts, so.
Thank you.
I want to stay in the way of progress, so I'll go ahead and offer the resolution approving MinDOT Active Transportation Grant Agreement number 1054919 in the amount of $171,336.53 and authorize the city manager and finance director to execute the agreement for and on behalf of the city of New Ulm.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second, any additional discussion?
Yes, Madam President, I forgot to mention that the contract award for this project will be coming at a future date once we have the executed agreement with the state.
Thank you, Mr. Stodheim, and I just want to thank you again, because yeah, this is, these are overdue, and you see them in so many other communities, and we're looking forward to having them here, so thank you for your work. Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, that motion does carry. Under new business, item number 7.1, Alina Health Systems Lease Agreement.
This is a lease agreement with Alina to use the parking lot that's below them. This would be the Second Amendment adding an additional 20 years. I really don't have any issue. We did this back in 2003 to extend it to 2023, so this would be extended to 2043.
And the rent is a dollar?
Yes.
Make the motion, Counselor Schultz. A motion to approve the Second Amendment to lease agreement with Alina Health Systems, extending the original lease agreement dated October 22, 2003, and first addendum to lease agreement dated January 1, 2013, related to certain lease, lease premises consisting of approximately 36,800 square feet of parking lot and terms and conditions.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second, any additional discussion? I just like they plow their own and they do, you know, they take care of it, so yeah, okay. Any additional discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That motion does carry. Last item of business. Last item of business today is item number 7.2, First Consideration of Ordinance Number 2023-TBD to amend Chapter 13 Stormwater Management and Standards of the City Code.
Thank you, Madam President, City Councilors. Today before you is the First Consideration of Revised Stormwater Ordinance. In essence, in summary, this revision would allow for the potential stormwater fee within the city code. You know, as previously authorized back in July of last year, we awarded personal, professional service contract with Bolton and Mink. And we've been working on that with them ever since. And we are now at the, the place now in this process where we need to make these ordinance revisions to allow the city to collect the fee. This ordinance does not set the fee, it does not have anything to do with the actual fee amounts, just allowing us to use the fee if the council so wishes in the future. There would be future action to set the fee and adopt that into the city fee schedule.
Thank you, Mr. Stodheim.
Well, not, not all that many left. It's first reading, second reading, publication, and then the fee discussion are kind of the last steps we have, so.
I'll go ahead and offer a motion for, to accept the First Consideration of Ordinance Number 2023 to amend Chapter 13 Stormwater Management and Standards, the city code of the city of New Ulm for inclusion of a stormwater utility fee.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second, any additional discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That motion does carry. At this time, I'm looking for a motion to suspend the rules to accept the addendum.
Madam Chair, I'll offer a motion to suspend the rules to address our addendum.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and accept the addendum for today. Any additional discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That motion does carry. Last item under the addendum is, I can't pull it up because my screen is.
Professional services contract for Herman Monument.
Okay, yes. Under new business, item number 1.1, Professional Service Contract for Hermunment, Herman Monument Society Feasibility Study. Mr. Nicely.
All right, good evening, Council President, Councilors, John Nicely, planner with the city of New Ulm. So the city, city of New Ulm Building Inspections Department, along with the Park and Rec Department have been working with State of Minnesota Historic Preservation Office and McDonald and Mac Architects to develop a path facing the numerous issues that we have at the Herman Monument. So since the last time staff has presented you, presented to you on the monument, we have taken the extra step of doing core samples of both the deck and then the base of the monument. And that was in addition to the 2019 assessment study that we did. When we put those two pieces of information together, it was found that there are substantial or significant structural issues with the monument. We had that discussion with SHPO up at the site and staff would like to pursue reconstruction rather than just rehabilitation on that monument. SHPO or the State Historic Preservation Office is in favor of that, that next step. But in order to be able to justify, justify that, they want us to prepare a document that basically outlines the reasons why we are going the reconstruction route versus the rehabilitation route. So it's putting together all of the information that we have in studying that monument. Additionally, they would need that information because the grant funding that we would be using to go after the documents to do deconstruction and then reconstruction actually comes from the State Historical Society. They would also need that piece of information as well to prove to them that there's justification for the actions we want to take. We estimate this, this study to take about, it's going to take about 16 weeks with the holidays in here. I'd expect to get it after the first of the year. The total amount for the work to be performed is $9,744. And that would conclude the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Nicely. And again, the deconstruction versus the rehabilitation is basically like Director Schmitz would say, you know, you're taking it apart piece by piece and fixing and putting it back together versus leaving it as one and trying to rehabilitate that as it is. And I think we all have been to the meetings and know kind of a lot of the issues that we have with Herman and that this is, I think, a more expensive route, but the better recommended route, is that all?
Actually, we, this actually might be the, the less expensive.
Oh, okay, well, there we go, some good news today, right?
I'll make the most authorized city manager enter in a professional service contract with McDonald and Mac Architects in the amount of $9,744 to prepare a feasibility study for the Herman Monument.
Second.
Do have a motion and a second, any additional discussion?
And one comment, I think, Mr. Nicely, this is the first one. I believe there'll be one other study we'll have to do.
So we'll be coming back to the council multiple times through this process. I would, just to give you a realistic timeline with the grant cycles the way that they are, we're probably looking at at least two years before we would even start to do deconstruction. And then with that, we'd be coming back through each grant cycle to the council to give you an update as well as to be able to apply for those grants.
Thank you.
Thank you, we do have a motion and a second, any additional discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That motion carries, with no additional business, this meeting is adjourned. We will move into a work session in approximately four to five minutes, thank you.